December twenty-third, when I get started here. First up is Human Resources and Government Operations Supervisor Borst. Everybody turn on your mics, please, if you haven't already done so. Yes, sir. Yes. Center table, if you could, please. Oh, is it?
Here you go.
We're supposed to sit back.
Yell at me?
I was kidding.
All right, I'll call the Human Resources Government Operations Committee to order.
Supervisor.
Jeff.
You're on this committee.
You're not getting out of it. Nice try.
Okay, issue number one, revising policy number one oh one point seven zero zero, health and benefits policy and procedures. Get a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Laura.
So it was brought to my attention that this policy had a sentence in that the couple must be legally married to be covered. That is not the case. We do recognize domestic partners for health insurance, so we do need to remove that, so it's housekeeping.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, issue number two, acceptance of absentee ballot prepaid posted grant extension program for Seneca County Board of Elections.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Issue number three, acceptance of technology innovation and election resource tier grant program for Seneca County Board of Elections.
Motion.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Issue number four, acceptance of twenty twenty-four general election grant program for Seneca County Board of Elections.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Issue number five, acceptance of ballot by mail grant program for Seneca County Board of Elections.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Issue number six, acceptance of shoebox grant program for Seneca County Board of Elections.
Support.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, issue number seven, acceptance of HAVA education grant program for Seneca County Board of Elections.
Support.
All right. Discussion?
Not in the specific one, but these were all, a lot of grants, do we get these every year?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm thinking... I have no idea. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Issue number eight, a resolution to introduce local law D of the year twenty twenty-four, setting salaries for county public officers and previously designated senior county personnel for the year twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Issue number nine, New York State Association of Counties one hundred year anniversary.
Support.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Issue number ten, Seneca County Board of Supervisors amends and adopts rules of order for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
Motion.
Second. All right, so you should have two copies here. One is the updated copy, and then there's a copy in red. Actually, all supervisors should have them on their desk. The copy in red is all the changes, so everybody can review them before we do the final vote on to them in January. But I think this was sent out to everybody, so we already can...
Is there a reason, Bob, or Joe, that one says rules of order, the other says rules of the term?
Nope, I don't know.
Right. Is there, is there anything substantive to the change in the title from rules of order to rules of the term? Okay, all right.
All right, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, issue number eleven, Supervisors rescind resolution number two oh five twenty twenty-four. It's down in here somewheres.
Page thirty-two.
There it is.
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Chairman, we're adjourned.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Economic Development Tourism and Housing Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Thank you, I'll call the Economic Development Tourism Housing Committee to order. We have one issue on the agenda. Motion to authorize New York State Department of Transportation Aviation Capital Grant application for equipment maintenance, storage building at Finger Lakes Regional Airport.
Motion.
Second. Questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Any other business? One thing I would update the committee on is I do expect at the January committee meeting, we will have an update on the LDC and on some Willard redevelopment. So just a heads up for the committee. There might be a special meeting in between. Don't have enough information at this point to decide that. Okay? Anything else? Mr. Chairman, the committee stands adjourned.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Health and Human Services Supervisor Reynolds. Need you to run that tonight. Yep. I have no idea.
He's trying to repair some water leaks.
Got some leaks?
Okay, we will call the Health and Human Services Committee together. Item one, Supervisors approve the two thousand twenty-five mental health services provider agency contracts.
Motion.
First, second.
Margaret, could you enlighten us on this, please?
Yeah, so we, the local government unit, the mental hygiene department passes through state aid to a variety of programs in our community to support services, and this is what that is.
Any questions for Margaret?
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Authorizing a contract, New York State Department of Health for the lead poisoning prevention grant.
Motion.
First and second.
Yeah, so this is the first of three housekeeping resolutions for the Public Health Department this evening. The lead poisoning prevention grant funds were used for environmental investigation by a public health sanitarian and case management by a public health nurse for cases of lead poisoning. Seneca County, by the way, averages about one case of lead poisoned, one, one childhood lead poisoning case each month. We also use the funds for outreach and education, you know, with the goal of preventing future cases and so forth, and there's no local match.
Good deal, any questions?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, number three, authorizing a contract, New York State Department of Health for early intervention administrative grant.
Motion.
Second. Scott?
Yeah, again, no local match, pretty straightforward. Early intervention connects children with developmental delays and disabilities to their needed services, eighty percent of which is speech language therapy, but also occupational, physical therapy and so forth. And we use these funds to offset some of the costs for administering that program.
How much we got, who, how much do we use this one a lot a year?
Oh, we use every penny of this, yeah, because the EBI program costs way more. This is a grant that the state should have increased tenfold ten years ago.
Speech therapy, that's a hottie, so, yeah.
But we take what they give us, so.
Any questions?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, okay, number four, authorizing a contract, New York State Department of Health for children and youth with special healthcare needs administrative grant.
Motion.
Second.
So this one, we shorten that, call it the Shin Program. So this program connects families to healthcare services and resources for children and youth who have special healthcare needs, just as it says. You know, think of kids with cerebral palsy, muscular dystrophy, things like that. The bills really rack up for those families, so we can use these funds to offset everything from formula to special medical equipment and so forth. We also use it to offset some of the salary infringed for the, the program manager.
Any questions?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Number five, Seneca County Board of Supervisors accepts two hundred and ten thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars from the University of Rochester to support services for Seneca County's residents impacted by the opioid, opioid use disorder and substance use disorder.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
So we've been working with the University of Rochester for about a year now. They are applying, they have applied for a federal grant, and they reached out to us and asked if we would be interested in subcontracting with them to receive funds to support some of the services that we are already doing in the community, specific to increasing access for people to services who suffer, who are impacted by opioid use disorder and other substance use disorders. It, it's outlined in here, but they're looking to help, these funds would help support some of our transportation, our mobile crisis services, and some of our peer services. Also, we were able to negotiate, and I assume the sheriff will come back maybe next month, but we asked them if they would be willing to assist our jail in support of some of the services that are offered there, so I know that they're, also, they wrote the jail, some of the jail work in that grant as well. So the sheriff will come back, I'm sure, to accept some additional funds from this grant.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Seneca County Division of Human Services to amend the two thousand twenty-four contract with... Oh, I guess government number six, where Supervisors approve the two thousand twenty-four twenty-five resource allocation plan for state aid funding for youth programs. First and second?
No second?
Second.
Second, all right, Mike?
Actually, Mike, I do think there is a contract amendment for Dr. Corin. For Dr. Corin.
Number six is where we...
Number six. So that's a contract amendment. He, he provides psychological evaluations for children and families within child welfare to determine what services may or may not be needed, and to further assist the youth with getting those services in the families. So the contract was underfunded in twenty twenty-four. So we're just moving from one line item to cover those expenses.
So we're gonna prop it up for...
Well... Yes, yes, so we did make the correction for the twenty twenty-five budget. So we wouldn't have to do this. Many are court ordered, so we have no say really on...
You don't know what's coming either, right?
Correct.
You don't know what's going to speak up next day and say, oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Seneca County Division of Human Services, two thousand twenty-four contract with Children's Home of Wyoming Incorporated for the non-secure detention of youth services, services of youth?
Yes, this is a renewal. Back in July, we entered into a contract with Children's Home of Wyoming for detention services for non-secure bed. They guaranteed us a rate for twenty twenty-five, so to get us through the twenty twenty-four budget without needing additional funds. So we budgeted for it in the twenty twenty-five budget. So we didn't want anything to not be in place if we needed it come January first, so.
All right, makes sense to me.
What, yes, what is the total dollar amount?
It's eighty-two thousand one twenty-five. So last year, we only needed to come up with roughly forty-three thousand to get us from July first through the end of this year. And that, this, this is the contracted amount.
And how many children does that represent servicing?
We, could be zero, it could be five, could be ten. So what, whatever the number of youth that need to go into detention, this, they'll, they'll accept those for this price. And we share a bed with Wayne County, so we split the cost. So unfortunately, we pay for the bed whether or not there's a youth currently in there or not. But if we don't have it in place, we know the alternative is not good. It is state reimbursed, so we do get a portion back, but...
Some of it back.
Yeah.
All right, motion?
There's a question, though.
We didn't motion this one.
All right, motion?
I'm second.
First and second?
Supervisor Reynolds.
What?
So the number, the numbers on the actual committee lineup aren't matching with the resolutions, so we need you to actually do issue number six. But in the packet, it's issue number seven. That one was missed.
We're gonna, we're gonna go back to that, actually.
Oh, okay.
You want us to vote us on this, and then...
Yeah, if you just, before you guys close out committee.
We'll go back to...
Oh, yeah, next eight, we haven't voted on this, yeah.
It's actually issue six on the lineup, but in the packet, it's seven. So if you want to just do that before you close out your committee.
All right, you got a motion?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number first.
Yeah, who's on second?
All right.
Number six, number six on yours, seven on the list.
Okay.
Yep.
First and second? Go ahead, Mike.
We received money on a annual basis from New York State Office of Children and Family Services, so it offsets some of the costs of the county to provide those programs. Some are mental, mental health, school-based program, youth activities within the community, so it offsets some of those costs to the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, that's why, number nine on this, number...
I got eight! I got nine, or eight! All right. All these numbers line up.
Support.
Second.
Yeah, I want them, yes. We... Well, we are, we will be turning over two of our old vans for auction. They have lots of miles and are in need of fixing, so we're proposing to purchase two new vans. We do tons of transporting of clients to get them to services. State aid dollars will support purchase of these vans.
Any questions?
Yes, how'd you end up with Pacific, I don't know about vans, but I did see an article, worse rated...
Oh.
For maintenance and...
We buy off of the state contract, so, yeah, it's what's available.
You have a choice of any other brand, or...
You know what, I'm not certain. My, my fiscal officer's the one who always manages the vehicles, so I, I can't, I can't say for certain.
I may want to look at that, and if you have another option, I mean, you could quick Google search that, but...
Sure. Okay, yeah. No, I appreciate the information, I will speak with Greg.
Any other questions?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. I think you guys got another thing on your sheet I got seen.
All set? I just got one question. First guy. Scott. I got a question, for I see in the budget that your state aid was cut fifty-six percent in one line item. Am I seeing that right?
Public health, I didn't, I didn't see that.
Maybe it was environmental health. Yeah, one, one line item was cut fifty-six percent.
I wasn't notified of any significant cuts to public health state aid. We get, so we get a base grant, I think it's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we get reimbursed. Anything that falls under what they call Public Health Article Six, which are basically the core public health programs. Anything beyond the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, then we get reimbursed thirty-six cents on the dollar for every dollar that we spend locally. We submit that on our state aid application the following year.
A line item somewhere in there that I noticed that.
Now, last year, they did try to zero out the rabies grant, and NICE HO on behalf of the counties, which I'm a member of NICE HO, on behalf of Seneca County advocated to keep that in the budget, and that was restored. They don't give us as much as we need, but they do target public health from time to time, but I had not seen that, nor was I notified by NICE HO of any specific cuts to the public health.
All right.
But, good question, I'll keep an eye out for it.
Thanks. That's all I got. Well, you're gonna stay right here, Mike.
I'm gonna stay here.
All right, next up, Supervisor Cronenwetter, Agriculture and Environmental Affairs.
Frank's missing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first one is a resolution regarding Cargill Incorporated's...
Hey, you are here.
Permit application for the Kuga salt mine. I sent you all a video to look at it.
I'll make the motion.
The state leases the land underneath Kuga Lake Cargill. If you, anybody's interested, go to Kuga Lake Watershed Network, has a clip in there from scientists that have studied this, and the fractures in the, it's just a hole underneath the bathtub, and columns holding it up, and the columns are, get squished down, and they want to put salt in there, or brine in there, saltwater. And as that sinks down, it's gonna squeeze it up through the cracks, and Kuga Lake will eventually be saltwater. So the DEC just says, well, we don't have to do an environmental check, you know, it's all good. So this resolution is, the Seneca County Board formally requests that the DEC deny Cargill's permit application or alternatively rescind the negative declaration and require the preparation of a comprehensive environmental impact statement to assess all potential environmental risks associated with the proposed activities. Conduct a public hearing to allow for community input and address the substantive concerns raised by residents and stakeholders regarding the application, and ensure that Cargill's reclamation plan and accompanying bond are revised to adequately address the environmental protection and public safety, and that sufficient measures are implemented to prevent potential pollution and ensure the long-term stability of the mine and surrounding areas.
I'll make the motion.
Any questions?
Oh, I'm gonna wait on it a little bit there. Most of this mine is in Colbert, and I got a geologist on my board, and I'm waiting for his feedback on it before I can go yea or nay on it, so. Brayton, he's, he's on the board, and he knows, he knows this stuff. I'm gonna wait on what he says, before I say yea or nay on it. I've talked to the guys that work in there at the mine, and they, they say it's safe, so I, I don't know, but I don't know. So I'm not gonna go one way or the other on this yet, so I don't, I'm gonna abstain, I guess. I know, I'm not comfortable making a decision yet.
Any other remarks, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Want to abstain? You got that. And we have to appoint Charles Sumner, as member-at-large to the Seneca County Soil and Water Conservation Board. Support. Any questions?
Who's Charles Sumner?
I'm not sure. Is he here?
Lives in Colbert, he's a great guy for personnel, he used to be Cornell's man for thirty years. He was teed personnel for Cornell for thirty years, and lives, lives on the lake, and beautiful house on the lake, and good guy.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
He been on it before?
Yep.
Yeah. He's been on quite a while, he's great for personnel, so.
All those opposed? Motion passed. And we need to appoint John Hunt as the Green Representative to Seneca County Soil and Water Conservation Board.
Second.
I've known John for quite a while, and he's been on this committee.
He's been on quite a while.
I worked with him at the White Deer Park. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I believe that's all we have. We got a... Well, I was trying to sneak on that board, but they only allow two supervisors. So, yeah, number two is to appoint Michael Reynolds and Jeffrey Trout to the Seneca County Soil and Water Conservation District Board.
Support.
Any questions? All those in favor? You want the job? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? No, I think we're done.
Thank you. Supervisor Hayes, Water and Sewer Treatment Management Operations.
We have one. Standing here anyway.
We have one issue.
So move.
Aye. We have any unfinished business?
I'm sorry, Chairman, one question. When will that happen?
When it's not freezing.
Okay.
We got the meter, right? Just gotta put it in.
No, the meter's there, what did it, no, the meter's there, we just have to change the configuration.
Right, we gotta change the plumbing.
Yes.
Make it work great.
Where's, so Dan, pending the weather, what, when do we think that would happen?
So, I mean, a big part is having approval to spend the funds, but you know, there's a possibility that we can get in a closure around it and it could be done pretty soon. But there is not a set timeline.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so that's laid out in the resolution, and so funds are available.
Dan's gonna give us an update that we just received from Wendell. Did you get the email?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And so I, I don't have the specifics on that one.
Twenty-eight point nine.
Yeah, so.
For the.
Yeah, so from all the grants that we applied for, we have received twenty-eight point nine million dollars between the two sewer renovation projects. And the one we received today was for Willard, which was an additional. Now, it's like three point nine million.
Plus, we haven't had any commitment yet from docs.
That's correct. And so I believe our ask was sixty percent, theirs was thirty percent, and there's still the possibility to negotiate some number in between. And so we did quite well on our funding applications.
So, Dan, what would be the timeline for all that starting?
Uh, so we are still waiting on remarks from the DEC. So we submitted the thirty percent drawings to the regional, the regional person, and so we're still waiting on their comments. I know he said that he had some, but he still needed to run them by his supervisor because of the process. But, you know, really, once we get those remarks, we can make adjustments based on their comments, and so that's gonna be a spring. You know, the process will, will continue in the spring.
And with these grants, would it need comptroller approval?
I'm not sure.
Well, the grants have been issued, so I'm not sure the comptroller does the approval process.
So it wouldn't? Okay, all right. Gotcha, okay. That, Bob answered my question, yeah.
Uh, they should be two, they're two separate projects with two different plans and two separate sets of comments.
Okay, any more questions?
Uh, I mean, that's depending on, you know, when, when the plans can be adjusted. And so, you know, right now, they're both in the same point of the process, but, you know, one might get ahead of the other depending on what type of alterations need to be made.
Actually, one other question. Would, when this is all done, in your opinion, does this help make the Willard property more develop, more attractive to developers, the fact with these sewer upgrades?
Yes, so we, we did not increase capacity necessarily, but it means that we're gonna be able to be compliant, so basically we'll be able to sort of stay in business.
Would it be too far to call it state-of-the-art sewer system?
I don't think that would be too far. I mean, you know, Wendell could probably tell you. But yeah, I mean, it's best, best engineering practices, so.
Okay, no more questions? All right. Thank you, Chairman, we're done.
Thank you. Next up, Supervisor Partee, Ways and Means.
That's throwing me all off. It's okay, though. It's okay, it's okay. Quick.
I call the Ways and Means Committee to Order. Issue number one, Board of Supervisors authorizes contracts with affiliated organizations for 2025.
Motion.
Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I do. We've gone back and forth on this at the last meeting on putting funding back in for affiliated organizations. Can you just refresh my memory on these? Are they getting their full ask or are we going with a percentage?
They are not getting what they originally requested. They are getting what was in the tentative budget, which in many cases was decreased. Here. This is the, what was requested. This is what's in the budget.
Is that the one that was sixty-six thousand dollars?
Sixty-three.
It got lowered to sixty-three?
No, it was sixty-three that passed at our last committee, that you added the sixty-three thousand back, but that took us to the tentative budget number, not what the original ask was.
Oh. Thank you.
Supervisor Shipley, did you want to see this? Show them the two columns.
So that was the ask.
I emailed that out to everybody. Right after the last meeting.
But just to refresh, the way this played out is, in the budget, we had decreased these organizations back to their 2024 budget, correct?
And then.
And then we, they added back, but there was questions whether or not, excuse me, the affiliates were going to get the full ask versus taking a less, more than 2024, but less than their initial ask.
That is what got approved, the way you just phrased it.
Okay.
The latter.
Well, I, and I just go back to the, we, I, I can't support giving them their full ask when every other department got cut. Their full 2025 ask, I'm okay with increasing their twenty, I'm, I'm okay with increasing from 2024 to give them a percentage.
Partial.
A partial, but not the full ask. So I just want to make sure these numbers were not the full ask, the full 2025 ask.
I'd have to look at that again. This is a reduction in all of them except for. It's a reduction in everybody except for the Village Waterloo Memorial Day Committee and the Seneca County Agricultural Society, the county fair. Let me compare this, this. What's requested. Everybody else got a decrease.
What did it told me? It's six and five thousand.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? What are you, what are you hearing? What do you think he said? Yes. Yes.
So they're not getting their full 2025 ask? Correct.
So everybody's in the same boat.
Motion carried, so moving on to issue number two, Board of Supervisors authorizes to correct and refund taxes to the county treasurer.
Motion. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carried. Issue number three, Board of Supervisors authorizes to extend and collect the 2025 town and county taxes. And you should have had on your desk a stapled tax numbers. So Lisa, did you have anything? Oh, wait, can I get a motion? Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? No questions? Did you want to say anything, Lisa? She gave it to me, I'll bring it up under new business. Thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Moving on to issue number four, Board of Supervisors authorizes amendments to the 2024 Seneca County budget. It's number three in the packet, but it's, it's number four.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I, I do have a question, so I don't know if this is a Julie question or I don't know if these are, because they're DHS budget transfers, I don't know if this is gonna be a Mike question. I'm looking at the DHS transfers and everything is kind of like, you know, contractual, I'm not sure what a lot of them are, but I'm curious, if you look, there's a decrease and then an expenditure and they kind of coincide. At the bottom, where it talks about contractual safety net increase and expenditure of two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, they're sort of increasing that, where is that money coming from? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Moving on to issue number five, Board of Supervisors approves the resolution requesting state legislation to renew the Seneca County sales tax.
Motion.
Any discussion or questions?
This, this is our four percent sales tax that we have to renew every, what is it, two or four years?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Is there any unfinished business to come before Ways and Means is back?
Did you hear something?
Yeah, what, under new business?
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Julie, did everybody get this on their desk? So on your desk also was the latest financial report. If you have any questions, let me know. I don't know if you had time to look it over before.
No.
Okay. And then, we did get an updated sales tax report. We are currently, correct me if I'm wrong, we are one percent above where we were this time last year. Correct? And then, under new business, I do have another resolution, and that is Board of Supervisors authorizes to ratify the tax rolls for 2025.
Motion.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And, motion carried. Any other new business? We adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, Supervisor Reinhardt, Public Works.
Okay, at this time, we'll call Public Works Committee to Order. We have two items on the agenda. First is authorizing a renewal with Auctions International.
Support.
Second.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, authorizing.
Supervisors name responsible local officials for the purpose of requesting the county of Seneca to the New York State Department of Transportation.
Second.
Roy, do you have anything on this? Okay. It's just, it's a housekeeping for the, for state duty. Yeah, we decided to put Roy on it. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
During old business, during new business for Public Works.
During none, we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So that concludes committee meetings. Now we're going to go on to our year-end board meeting. All right, can I get a roll call of members, please?
Supervisor Reynolds.
Here.
Supervisor Jeffrey Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Brownow.
Here.
Supervisor Latini.
Here.
Supervisor Borst.
Here.
Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Schmider.
Here.
Supervisor Cronewater.
Here.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Here.
Supervisor Partee.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen. Supervisor Don Trout. Supervisor Enzlow.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley.
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please join us for a pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation from Jeff Shipley of Seneca County Chamber of Commerce. Jeff, floor is yours.
Thank you. Just give us a second while he sets the screen.
Make sure your sound works, too. There you go.
This one?
Any one, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
You should be good to go. You can use the arrow keys here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry for the delay, everyone, but greetings, supervisors, thanks for having me. Thanks for having me. This is, I'm here tonight to give the quarterly TPA report. I'm actually going to mix in a little bit of year-end too, if that's all right with you. If anybody would like copies of this presentation, I can leave this with Amanda. You can take this, or I can email the PDF version, Amanda, that might be easier too. Okay, so greetings, everyone. Thank you for giving me a few minutes. I'm going to start with some research by the numbers. This is information that comes to us from the research program that we have ongoing at the TPA. I just want to mention, it's worth reiterating, that up until a few years ago, Seneca County did not have county-specific information like this. And this is a, this is an initiative we started about five years ago when the occupancy tax fund started to increase. And so we make a lot of decisions. We use this information to identify trends, to identify targets, and then coalesce our marketing around it. So it's really important information that we use each and every day and we use to put our marketing efforts forward. So I'm going to start with this slide. There's two things happening on this slide. On the left, this is all talking about overnight travelers, overnight visitors to Seneca County. Very important overnight visitors because that's what fuels the occupancy tax fund. So we are really interested in marketing to overnight visitors, learning where they're coming from, learning more about them. On the left is the percent of overnight visitors, where they break out, domestic, which would be other parts of the country, international visitors, and in-state visitors, which is other parts of New York State. On the right is a chart that shows you the progression. This is starting December 2023 and moving through the rest of this year. We actually stopped November as the last month we have usable data on. If you recall, the last time I was in front of this board, I mentioned that there was a, sort of a negative trend of overnight visitation dropping in the first quarter. And we saw that play out through the end of March. Then in April, it turned around. And as you can see on the, on the right side with all those arrows, I put those arrows in to show this to you. Every month from April on, we have had an increase in overnight visitation from 2023 in Seneca County. Not every county in the Finger Lakes can say that, by the way. So very, very good news as we picked up in April. I did circle the in-state visitor overnight visitation rate. It's 35%. Reason why I circled that is because I've identified, we have identified at the, at the TPA, we have identified this as an area of opportunity for us in 2025. And I'm going to get into a couple of those ways that, that we're putting programming together for this. We'd really like to increase that. I keep turning the wrong one. We'd really like to utilize those in-state visitors to our advantage. The next chart gives you two things. One, it tells you where our visitors are coming from, where we're seeing the majority of our visitors come from in New York, in Seneca County. On the left side is domestically, all the areas that they could be coming from the U.S. And on the right is a deeper dive into where they're coming from in-state, in, in New York State. You can see people from other parts of New York State make up the majority of our visitor origins in 2024. Almost 75% of our visitors are from in-state. So it's really important that we are aggressively targeting these in-state visitors to, to come here and hopefully stay overnight. So in-state, you can see Syracuse, Rochester, and Buffalo top the list. And then Elmira, New York City, and Albany, sort of jockey for position where it comes underneath that. But I'm going to turn your attention over to the domestic market, the one on the left. And I've circled New Jersey. I've circled this destination because we noticed New Jersey a couple, was an emerging area about a year, year and a half ago. And one of the areas that you also see, the number two, is Pennsylvania. And Philadelphia was a very strong market for us ever since COVID hit. And so in noticing the trend of New Jersey, we started to put advertising dollars to target people from New Jersey. And we did this primarily targeting look-alike social media users from the Philadelphia market in New Jersey along the Route 55 freeway corridor, which really goes from Philadelphia to Cape May. We also put some, it also includes Route 47 to some extent. The biggest increase in 2024 of New Jersey travelers was from that corridor. Specifically Washington Township, which is sort of outside Philly, Franklin, which is along that Route 47 corridor, and Wildwood, which is outside of Cape May. That was a marked difference, marked increase from where we were in 2023. So we are, and then other, the other ancillary thing that, that we get at the TPA is from our tourism partners, telling us that they have noticed increased visitors from New Jersey, from the New Jersey, especially the wineries, see New Jersey license plates. So we feel fairly confident that our efforts have, have produced strong ROI from the advertising efforts, specifically in New Jersey, which is why I wanted to showcase that. So I want to talk about what changed from Mar, from April on. And it started with the solar eclipse. We did a very heavily targeted and direct marketing campaign promoting Seneca County for the solar eclipse. Was on April 8th, 2024. Here's one of the posters that we produced. That solar eclipse effort really attracted people to Seneca County in significant ways. And it, and it also altered our, our economy. It produced economic, real economic impact in the Seneca County economy. It wasn't ultimately the event we were all kind of hoping it would be with the cloud coverage that day. It was a little bit of a bummer. This is a, this next slide shows you a heat map from where people in-state came to Seneca County from. This was people that were tracked over the solar eclipse weekend. And so we, we excluded the, the outside New York State. But we did a marketing campaign that went pretty far and wide just because of the channels that we used. But it was primarily targeted to Syracuse, Albany, down south, east and south of us. And so you can see in this heat map, there's a considerable amount of, in the purple, which is down near New York City and Philadelphia, and a lot of the red that starts in Albany and it works down the Hudson. This is a heat map showing you where people came from outside of New York State. Pennsylvania and New Jersey top the list. You can see there are people from all over the country, obviously. But I wanted to show, show you this heat map to, to show you those concentrated areas that would have been touched by our marketing campaigns. This one gives you an idea of the overnight stay. And so I just showed you the slide earlier that broke out how many, what the percentages of people that, that are overnight visitors to Seneca County. So on the right is that same chart I showed you back a couple slides ago. 47% for domestic visitors to the county this year spending the night and 35.2% from in-state visitors spending the night. Look at the left. This is solar eclipse week, April 4th through 8th. Domestic visitors that spent the night were, shot up to 60 and a half percent. In-state visitors shot up to 57 and a half percent. It, this, this event, the solar eclipse, produced significant returns for Seneca County and Seneca County economy. This last slide on the solar eclipse gives you a visual for what the short-term rental market did during the solar eclipse weekend. You can see, this is giving you dates before solar eclipse and after solar eclipse. The, the rise in the middle is solar eclipse weekend. So that five period of solar eclipse weekend, April 4th through 8th, saw an average daily occupancy of 80%, and average daily demand of 170 rental properties. That compares to the rest of the month of April, April 10th through 30th. The average daily occupancy was 29%, and the average daily demand was 70 properties. So in all, our methods tracked 851 identified booked nights over that period. The average daily rate was $363 a night. So that equates to approximately $308,000 in revenue that was earned from short-term, the short-term rental market alone. The overall 308,000? Per night was, average daily rate was $363. Now that went up and down, you know, depending on what night of the week that was, but average was 363. And we tracked 851 identified booked nights for that solar eclipse weekend. So I just wanted to give you this visual because solar eclipse was a significant event for Seneca County and the tourism efforts. Okay, so we're going to move on, give you some idea of what we have been up to in terms of our advertising, our earned media. We had an $80,000 digital media budget this year. That has produced more than 3 million impressions, over 170,000 engagements with the Seneca County-specific brand. We call it Discover Seneca. Over 80,000 visitors were sent to the county's tourism website over the past year just from those digital advertising efforts. 8,000 new leads were added to the county's tourism marketing email distribution list. Now this distribution is up to over 25,000 individuals. And we send them bi-weekly tourism newsletters to let them know what's happening in Seneca County, what's new, and entice them to come back for repeat visitation. I don't know why I put Pittsburgh West there. Sorry about that. Moment of not, not understanding. Earned media, we've had more than 15 placements and media outlets in 2024. That equates to a readership of more than 3 million. That's what, that's what the combined viewers of those publications are, and more than 2,500 media shares. Just in the last week, here's a story from Vogue that, it's kind of hard to see on that screen, but it's, Seneca Falls was named one of the best Christmas towns in the, in the United States for holiday cheer. That was a result of one of the writers that our regional PR program hosted. And so the earned media coverage that we get for Seneca County cannot be discounted in terms of how much benefit and how much ROI returns to all of us as a result of it. Here are some initiatives that we are feverishly working on to launch in the first quarter of 2025. On the left is a version of a tear-off tourism map. This is like a tablet map that will be distributed to, well, really anybody that wants them in Seneca County from a tourism property standpoint. But we've really envisioned them for hotels, accommodations, possibly wineries, people where there's going to be more heavily trafficked. On the front side is this image, and we've actually added a few more things into the, in, into the grid. On the backside is a listing of every single tourism property in Seneca County. So everyone's included in this publication in Seneca County if you're a tourism business. We're really excited about that one. On the right is another new digital development that we are really excited about. It's a packages app. So it's an app that you can get on your phone that's going to be able to allow you to purchase predefined packages. We envision this for our accommodations, our vacation rentals, B&Bs, possibly hotels. We will take all of the guesswork out of it. We'll, we'll take the payment, we'll collect the payment, we'll have the booking agent for the, for the user. The, the, the property only needs to have a link or a way to send them to our app. The one I, I put you on the screen, it's the same company that does the Kukalake Wine Trial Pass. The Yates County Chamber of Commerce is the TPA in Yates County, and they've been using this company for this very reason. And so it's a really nifty, I think, a very interesting app, especially for our vacation rental owners, quite honestly, because it brings value added to them. They don't have to do a thing. All they have to do is include this link, their customers go right here, they sign up for it, they pay, they get the pass right on their phone, and they go to the, explore our county. So we are really excited about this, this development. We're going to be launching that in, hopefully, in the first quarter of 2025. So that's something that we are working on right now to firm up. So the TPA will be responsible for collecting the packages and the offers. And, and then it gets put, listed on our website, on the accommodations website. They just go to the app and they pay for it. There they go. So we'll, we'll put the packages together based on interest from the industry, and then they can use it to their benefit. Mm-hmm, precisely. Well, so we're leaving off the accommodation piece because the benefit here is those accommodations don't have to work out all those details with the partners. People that are coming in safe to their B&B, want to experience a few wineries, maybe Miranda Cheese. Almost all of them have tasting fees when you go there. So we'll collect this one package in one spot. They'll pay for all of the tasting fees in one spot, and then we'll remit them to those companies. Correct, on your smartphone. Right. I wanted to finish with two initiatives that have consumed a lot of our time. I am part of the Finger Lakes Regional Tourism Council. That group is a collection of all the TPAs in the Finger Lakes this year. Actually, I'm going to save that. I'm going to talk about that in the next slide. Two, these two initiatives, we've been working on a lot. The Harriet Tubman Underground Railroad Corridor. And thank you, by the way, to all of you here because you passed this at the last board meeting that I was at, Seneca County support for this. This is a proposed 550-mile route that will go through Seneca County, through, via Seneca Falls and Waterloo. It is rethink one of those elements that's going to cause increased in-state visitation. We think people are going to want to explore, open up a new market for Seneca County and the amazing resources we have with the Underground Railroad. So we are extremely excited about that one. On the right is a, is a project that we are partnering with, with our state association. It's called New Yorkers Take Your Vacation. Again, another way we are trying to target our marketing efforts towards in-state visitors. New York employee, employees leave an estimated 40 million paid time off days per year. If they even used 19 million of those, that would result in a significant increase for economy. I have the numbers right here for you. So it is 40 million days of paid time off are unused each year by New York employees. If, if, no, I was wrong. 12 million of those days were used, it's $1.9 billion of visitor spending added into the community. So we are targeting New York workers, New York employees, to use their paid time off and explore the destinations in New York State in their backyard. And so this is, again, another way that we are targeting in-state visitors to Seneca County, obviously other parts of the state. Correct. Okay, the last one is, is where I was going. So I sit on the finger, the, Seneca County has a spot on the Finger Lakes Regional Tourism Council. It's a collection of the TPAs from around the Finger Lakes. Over the last two years, I've served as chair of that group. In 2023, we went after, and in 2024, we were awarded the largest grant in the history of this regional organization. It is to promote outdoor experiences in New York, in, in the Finger Lakes. And so we are doing that with a series of visits, of videos that will target all of the outdoor experiences that we have in each of the 14 counties. Now, Seneca County is not going to be represented on every video. The point of this is to get people to the Finger Lakes and then hopefully appeal to them once they're here. But I will tell you, Seneca County has made the, the cut on the first one, which is hiking. We had one of our Seneca County partners from Anazuma that was, made an appearance on that one. That's our regional outdoor experience campaign. I have just a two-minute video to show. I have just a two-minute video to show you, to give you a little teaser of that. But as part of that video, we are also part of the Leave No Trace Program for one year. We've got a one-year membership as part of this regional program. And so we're going to be coming out with hel- helping our partners understand what Leave No Trace is and starting to do more of a campaign around the Leave No Trace Program. In a similar vein, we are also, we just signed the deal with a, a group called Wheel the World. It is for accessibility travel. It is the largest accessibility marketer of travel and tourism in the world. And Seneca County will have a presence in a very big way on this Wheel the World website. We have, we are, we are bringing this group to Seneca County to inventory. I think it's 20 different properties in the county. No charge to them because we are paying this through the TPA program. But this is going to allow them to understand where they might fall short in terms of accessibility, or if they are fully equipped to handle accessible travel, they will be listed on this very important and influential accessibility travel website. And so we are really excited about that, bringing, again, a new market to Seneca County and our community. And so with that, I'm going to leave, hopefully this works, the teaser with the regional outdoor experience campaign. This is the first of six videos that will be produced on outdoor experiences in the
Nature and natural beauty is a great uniting force. The entire Finger Lakes region is full of these incredibly dramatic landscapes that are really accessible to a lot of people.
To love a place, you have to experience it. And so when we take people out to experience this, hopefully that motivates them to be good stewards as well.
Otherwise, if we're not conservationists, then, you know, we lose this opportunity to have what we have here.
The Finger Lakes is actually a hidden gem.
We almost know areas like this in the country that have all of this water, natural water, not reservoirs.
You have a lot of forests, you have the lakes, of course, that are gorgeous, but you have a lot of beautiful farms that people are pouring, you know, their heart and soul into.
People get up here and they look around and it's, I can't tell you how many smiles I've seen.
I was a little bit nomadic for many years, and then I came to the Finger Lakes. Even though I didn't grow up in this area, it feels like home.
I think it's important that we keep them protected and accessible.
Collaboration is key. It makes us all better.
I'm proud to be part of an organization who has this mission to get people out enjoying this area, but also being a responsible steward or caretaker of our environment.
We can create a baseline that says everyone is welcome to participate here in our great outdoors. And so that's what we're looking for. We're looking for inclusion to be just a matter of business, a way of life.
Okay, and that is our report. That is what we've been up to on behalf of Seneca County. Any questions?
I have one, Jeff. I'm not sure this is really something you would know about, but like in other areas, what is, like, the towns charge these rental places so much a year, like for permit? Do you, any idea like what other towns charge roughly, or what's the normal?
I, I do think it varies, and I know that I think it varies within Seneca County, if I'm not mistaken. Supervisor Trout, I know, I know Town of Fayette has rental fees or registration fees for rental owners. I will say, so I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what the range is, but I do know it varies. I, I don't want to misspeak, but I think $500 is one of those that I've heard in one, in one area. I will also tell you that New York State has legislation that's sitting, awaiting Governor Hochul's signature to create a statewide registry for vacation rental owners. And if that passes, I think there are, we are monitoring that bill very closely. As soon as she signs it, if she signs it, we are going to be working out a seminar for our short-term rental owners here in Seneca County to give them an idea of what to expect in this new bill, in this new law. And so I do think we are sort of on the cusp right now of sort of the Wild West with vacation rental owners and, but it, it appears that New York State is looking to take, put some sort of framework in place in the very near future. And that could-
Probably want to start charging themselves.
Correct. The state will charge a fee, the localities will charge a fee, you know? So things could be changing here pretty soon, but we're, we're still waiting on her signature on that bill.
More money.
Right.
More money.
I, I really don't know. They haven't announced what that fund will be, but there's also the frame, you know, the, the language right now in that bill also alludes to if counties like Seneca County or municipalities already have a framework in place, would they, would they be forced to participate in the statewide registry? I don't know, maybe not at first, but I do think the state wants to standardize this across the board, and I could definitely see there being one registry in the near future. But there's a lot of questions. It's a lot, I, I apologize for making, you know, giving you sort of a lot of questions here. I still have a lot of questions. I've been on the, I've been on the phone with representatives from Expedia, and they are not very happy that they were left out of the negotiations on this bill. Airbnb is the biggest lobbyist that's mounting an effort to stop this, but it looks like there is a very big push to make this happen at the state.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions? Thank you for the presentation. Last year, I remember you mentioning a little bit more about how you measure return on investment. In a environment where we have increasing pressures, we are not being able to fully staff teams, fully provide financial dollars, et cetera. Chamber of Commerce gets roughly 500,000 from the county, maybe just under. And you mentioned in your presentation, you're fairly confident we're driving a return on investment. What measures are there or can you look at to help demonstrate your ROI for the community?
Great question, Supervisor. I'll point to two things that we have access to right now. One is the occupancy tax revenue stream itself, the occupancy tax dollars. Are those going up? Are those going down? And for every year over the last 11 years, it's gone up, including in the COVID year. So occupancy tax, the occupancy tax fund itself is one ROI measurement. The other measurement would be our website visits. How many people have come to our website and clicked through from advertisements like you just saw? Now, that doesn't tell me if they actually came here and spent money, right? But it does give me an indication if they are seeing our ad, if the dollars that we spent for those ads are having a, a return to get traffic to our website. And you saw some of the numbers from 2024, those numbers have consistently gone up. When I started with this TPA, we were somewhere around 17,000 website hits, and that was back in 2010. We are now over 140,000 website visits. And so we are able to track whether or not those come from those ads. To your point, I think, one of the areas that we have put in our budget for 2025 that was discussed and approved by SCACOT, which is your committee, Seneca County Advisory Committee on Tourism, is a conversion study. And we are going to be working with Texas A&amp;M University in around June of 2025. I told you earlier, we have a list of about 25,000 names that we've acquired from those advertisements that we send bi-month, bi-weekly newsletters, tourism newsletters, to try and entice them, encourage them to come here. And many of those are repeat visitors. But those 25,000, we are going to be working with Texas A&amp;M University to measure from the time they've seen our ad to the time they click through to go to the website for Seneca County, Discover Seneca, to the time they come, they set foot in Seneca County and use a credit card. We will be able to measure how much money has been spent in market, and we can tie it back to those ads. So we don't have anything currently like that, but I will, I will promise you that if you ask me this question next year at this time, I will be able to give you more of a definitive answer in terms of money related to this one particular campaign. It's very difficult to sit here and tell you with any certainty how much money I think, you know, the ROI was on some of these advertising campaigns, just like if you ask any winery owner how much, you know, how many visitors they have. Unless they have counters, they probably wouldn't be able to tell you a good idea of how many visitors came through their door, or how, how many of those saw their ads and purchased because of it. It's just a very difficult area to be able to definitively say. But I feel very confident that this Texas A&amp;M study is going to give us some indication of what the economic impact is from some of our efforts by this time next year. We have, we have campaigns going in-state, we have campaigns going out-of-state, we have campaigns going international with the Canadian market. Ontario is a very strong market for us. And- Yep. So there's a couple ways. Number one is all of that research that I showed you at the beginning. That's what we're using that research for. Are there trends? Are we seeing emerging markets, pockets of emerging markets show up in those, in those reports? And if they are not in our targeted campaigns, why aren't they? And how can we add them? That's how we came across New Jersey. That was a perfect example. The other way we target is with programs that the state has coming up that we know about, with programs that our region has coming up, like this outdoor experience campaign. If you've noticed, we have been prepping for this for the last year. The latest version of that visitor guide that we had is all about getting outdoors because we were trying to get ahead of this area. So we piggyback on efforts as well. Yep, absolutely. And I will also tell you, in 2025, it's the 200th anniversary of the New York State Canal System. So we will be looking to do some work with canals, and so we're going to be targeting some groups that are inclined in that capacity. We're going to be obviously targeting groups that are inclined on the outdoor capacity, and we're starting to set up that accessibility. And I, I think you noticed in that video, we mentioned quite a few times accessibility. I was one of the leads on that, the, the editing of that, of that video and of this campaign in general. So we are trying to get ahead of accessibility travel, which is going to be a whole new market because we have not literally done anything in the accessibility market right now. So there are various way, I hope that answered the question. It's, yes, it's a great, a great thought and great opportunity. We will definitely follow up with that. And I will say, I think we are going to be getting much more involved with our local historical societies as a result of the Underground Railroad Corridor. We've already started working with the county historian, and I am absolutely amazed at the resources that every one of your towns has in terms of Underground Railroad. I've seen the list. It's pages, a volume of information that we are excited about. I said that trail is going to run through Seneca County, through Seneca Falls and Waterloo, but we have an opportunity to bring people, tell people the rest of our story, which includes covert, which includes Ovid. There are other areas that are involved in the Underground Railroad that we think are going to be ripe for opportunities as we, as we move forward. Certainly. So first of all, thank you to all of you for the partnership. It truly is a game changer for the chamber's ability to move forward with this project. I will tell you that we are also intending to come back in January, I believe I talked to the chairman about, with much more of a presentation on this for you. But I will say, so we are committed to moving forward in a, in a responsible manner for all parties, the chamber, the county, and the residents of Seneca County at that corner site entire. We have a board that's, our leadership is changing over at the beginning of the year, so we're trying to bring them up to speed right now. And we're working with the state to identify some clarification in terms of how much leeway there would be in modifying a project, for example. And so there's a lot, there's a lot at play right now, but I would expect that we, we will be able to answer maybe much more of your questions in detail in January. The other thing I, I would like to offer to all of you, we have a building committee set up. This is not just the Chamber of Commerce. We have people not in the chamber on this building committee, and we would invite all of you, if you want to be a part of that, if you want to sit in on one of these building committee meetings, you're more than welcome to. I know Supervisor Partee is on that building committee as a representative to this board, but it's an opportunity for anyone here that wants to know or be involved in this project to do so. You're welcome.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Can't be much in it.
Kleenex.
You're going to ruin, you're going to ruin it for all of us.
We don't either, but I don't, I don't like it.
You're going to be on TV doing this.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Rob. All right, let the record show Supervisor Don Trout is with us now. Okay. First up, we're going to Ways and Means, number five, Supervisor Partee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, Board of Supervisors authorizes to correct and refund taxes to the county treasurer.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number six.
Board of Supervisors ratifies the tax rules for 2025.
Support.
Second, any discussion?
Supervisor Partee, is that this document? No, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, number seven.
Board of Supervisors authorizes to extend and collect the 2025 town and county taxes.
Support.
Second. Second, any discussion?
That's- Yes, that's that document, so.
Supervisor Jeff Trout?
Thank you, Chairman. So I'm just curious, for the highway item, there's nothing for Junius or Vera, is that-
That's, if you look, um, at the top, it says outside. So it's because Junius-
So if they have a village?
They don't have villages.
Gotcha, that's, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number eight.
Board of Supervisors authorizes the resolution requesting state legislation to renew the Seneca County sales tax.
So moved.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number nine, Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Board of Supervisors authorized the New York State Department of Transportation Aviation Capital Grant application for equipment maintenance storage building at the Finger Lakes Regional Airport.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next up, number 10, Supervisor Borst.
Resolution to introduce local oddee of the year 2024, setting salaries for county public officers and previously designated senior county personnel for the year 2025. An application of Senate County 2025 non-bargaining unit management sca- salary schedule to set positions in set public hearing.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Don't pay attention to the numbers at the top. There was a little, little discrepancy there. Okay. Number 11, Supervisor Hyson.
Find it here.
Yeah, don't pay attention to the numbers. Oh, uh, number 12, I'm, page 12, yeah.
That's why I couldn't find-
Page 12. Page 12, item number 11.
You want number 12, right?
Yes, page 12, yeah. Yep, in the bottom, yeah.
Numbered it, okay. Seneca County Division of Human Services to amend 2024 contract with Dr. David Corin, PhD.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 12, page 13, Supervisor Hyson.
Okay, Board of Supervisors approve 2024 to 2025 resource allocation plan for state aid funding for youth program.
Got support? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Page 14, number 13, Supervisor Hyson.
How come I got 14 on my page and he got 13?
I said there was a discrepancy, let's just go.
I got 14 and 14. Okay, Seneca County Div- Division of Human Services 25, 2025 contract with Children's Home of Wyoming, Wyoming Inc., non-secure detention services for youth.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Any unfinished business? New business? Supervisor Don Trout, special order of day? Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, everybody, Merry Christmas.